I'd like to welcome everybody tonight to Nevada Community School District's Board of Education Meeting of August 18th, 2025. I would make note of we have some additions to the agenda and I'd like to call this meeting to order and I would seek approval of the agenda as it's placed before us tonight.
So moved.
Second?
Motion in a second to approve the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public comment?
None.
Would remain unbeaten. 4.1, Dr. Gray, that was in your update, but why don't we tell the the community what has happened to our welding program?
Yeah, I couldn't remember if I put this in update, so I just thought I'd throw it on as an FYI here tonight that we've learned that DMAC does not have an instructor for our welding program this fall, so those students have been switched to other courses and we're fingers crossed that we can get, they can get somebody for the spring.
How many of our students is that a class?
Um, so there are 15 or 16 spots for that class and I think we had six or seven of them.
Okay, so it's not a big, but it is, but it isn't?
But yeah, a little disappointing though because that's been a really successful program.
It's never been a problem. I mean, we've had over what, 15, 10 years?
Uh, it was about 10, yeah. Uh, well, we started building that
14 or 15?
10 and 11 years ago. So we've had the program in place for probably eight or nine.
All right.
Years, yeah.
All right. Any questions or any comments?
Is there no alternatives for?
Um, so we've had the same instructor the entire time and he was planning to do it one more year, but they got a new dean in that area and that dean said that he is not qualified anymore unless he takes two courses. And I think he asked if he could test out of them because he's a master welder. And that was a no-go, so.
Yes.
We can't, we don't have the ability to contract with this person or someone else to to fill that because it's a DMAC program.
It's a DMAC class, yeah. Um, I did reach out, had some conversation with Patrick Clem about anybody, perhaps Almeco. They have one, but he's not completely finished with his certification yet. Um, and that one, we did talk to back when we started this program. Um, not sure if he's totally interested in running the program on his own, but the instructor we have, we have had started, he was at Almeco and they flexed his schedule so he could do it for us. And then he went to Midstates and they flexed his schedule so he could do it for us, so. Um, anyway, just did want to reach out there to see if maybe we could come up with somebody, but no luck.
But we would re-enter the program if I heard you correctly. If we had an instructor that we brought in first semester, we could start it back up second?
Yeah, they're, they're hoping to get somebody second semester.
All right, well, that's, that'll have to do, I guess.
Yep.
I just had here a little personal note on Friday, found out one of my very best employees that I work with at Converse took a HVAC job at DMAC. He got approached early last week.
Yeah.
Didn't tell anybody until Friday.
Well, that's interesting because my, my, my son's roommate is doing the HVAC program and got informed a week or two that their instructors had resigned. And so they were in limbo as to whether or not the program would be offered, so apparently you just made sure it was offered.
No, well, the thing is, we would have gladly kept him, we would have opted, he's that good, but he's getting, you know, I, I know how he is because he's where I was when I got out of my FedEx truck. You get a little physically creaky and it's time to do something with your brain, not your back. And I wish him well, but boy, I'm going to miss him. So it happens, people have... All right, enough of the tears. Let's get to our action agenda. We are, I can tell by the time of the year just because we're talking about milk bids, 5.1.
Milk bids, we got two of them. Um, we're recommending, you got the AE and Highland, um, recommending a little bit from AE.
Been with AE number of years, right?
Um, we only went away from AE one time in my 12-plus years now and it did not go well. Yeah, there, there was, I think it was at Roberts, maybe it was slightly lower and we took it.
We did over at Roberts.
And the kids wouldn't drink it, yeah, so we were less than that, but.
And Hertz will point that out because that's not how I buy it for my house.
It was.
It's not a happy time.
No.
There is a difference.
We, we did hear about that decision, so.
Yeah. But I appreciate Highland coming and, and submitting a bid because I have had their products and I gotta tell you, I was a long-time AE consumer, Highland's pretty good too. Well, it's an action item and I think it's pretty straight up, so.
With a little approval of our milk bid for upcoming year, uh, in the amount quoted.
Second?
Motion in accepted, or motion in a second to accept the AE submitted bid for our coming 25, 26 dairy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved? I gotta say that you're probably doing this one. Welcome, John Cruz, thank you for spending part of your evening with us. 5.2, printer copy lease addendum.
So we had to adjust our copier printer lease, mostly the printer. Um, we got the copiers in and we knew we were going to have a little bit of adjustment, so in the past we've had, it's called follow me printing, so teachers and staff and students can print to this follow me printer. And then that allows them to go to any printer or copier in the district and show up and print out whatever they were trying to print. Uh, prevents some paper misuse of printing something out and then they forget to go get it. So it's helped out quite a bit when we did that during COVID, we switched that the last lease. With this one, they were going to have copiers and printers essentially be separate print, printers. Um, so if you wanted to print to a copier, you're going to have to print to a copier. If you wanted to print to the hallway printers, you're going to have to print to the hallway printers and then go to those separately. That was going to have to be a big change for our staff of adjusting your mindset of where you printed to. Um, so instead of doing that, we were able to get these different printers, which are mainly the hallway printers and then a couple of like office staff type printers that we adjusted to, a little more expensive, but it allows us to keep going with the same method of follow me printing that we've been doing for the past five years. We should be getting them in, shipment should be coming in Wednesday for most of the office printers and then the hallway ones were waiting still, were hoping that sometime in that first week of school or second week of school.
Is this lease increase a per machine?
Yeah.
How many machines?
It's, uh, I don't know what the total amount, it's everything besides the copiers. So 32 or 31 printers?
Joe, you're good with numbers, what's the math on that, what are we approving?
So you're going up like 275 a month, $275 a month for the adjustment.
Time, did you say 32 printers?
No, just overall.
Oh.
$275 overall is the adjustment to the lease.
Okay, not per printer, okay.
To switch all those printers up.
Wow.
Feel better?
Yeah, it's not per printer.
Yeah, I, that's what I did, I started on the per printer and it's just like, okay, how many printers?
No. Yeah, that would have been a different discussion.
Good answer, John.
Okay.
The per print, all of that is going to stay the same, not going to be any different.
Do I have to say the words?
Well, I'll make a motion to, uh,
Cast on.
Approve an update to, um, the printer copier lease. So we can obtain different printers to fit with the follow me printing.
Second?
Motion in a second to take administration's recommended, recommendation to update the access systems, uh, proposed change for the district. Any last questions of John while he's here? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Enjoy the last few hours of summer.
Let's go back to fifth grade orientation.
Okay, maybe your summer's gone.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay, 5.3, we have a policy update for 1.7 mileage reimbursement rate. We've had a robust conversation the last several days.
Yeah, so the, um, I put this in board update a while back as to whether or not, I said I would bring it to the board if you have any desire to change the mileage rate, which has been 36 cents. Some of the information that's, was shared since the packet went out. Um, Joe provided some more accurate information than Google was able to provide me clearly. Um, Tammy sent you some information, obviously we don't have very many mileage reimbursements each year, maybe a handful top, but if you so desire to change it, um, that's why it's in front of you, if not, um, that's okay too.
Thank you for the deep dive on to Joe. That was a little bit heavier reading than I had anticipated looking at the board update and the follow-up.
Yeah, it was really helpful to see a kind of a summary of the last couple of years of mileage claims that have been made and, uh, I would have expected more staff and more miles, so it's good to have this information. Because at some point you, um, you know, we reached a tipping point where it becomes more economical just to purchase and own a vehicle than it is to pay mileage. So that, that was kind of why I looked at it the way I did and requested a little more information on it, so. I'm not sure we're at that point, seeing the mileage that we're driving and the money and
In my mind, yeah.
And the reimbursement that it would, um, you know, result in, even if we were to raise it to 50 cents or 70 cents or whatever. But definitely something to keep an eye on in the future.
Yeah.
I agree with that, but I, I do think we should match what the IRS has said, has identified and even, and have it available as an option if needed, if we did have pool cars, if pool cars are all used. Like in the county, for instance, there are times that we just can't get pool car and we have to go and that's unanticipated wear and tear on your vehicle that may not be good for your family, you may not have the resources to do that.
Most of our people, um, when they're going, most schedule a van. But it's not always available and sometimes depending on where you're going, how far, it may just be a personal preference to not have to, or, you know, if I'm going to Des Moines, I'm probably not going to drive here, get a van and then go to Des Moines, then drive back, take the van back and then drive home, so it just depends. But most of our people do schedule vans if they're, they're going somewhere, school vehicle.
Yeah, when I was kind of going through my own head and trying to calculate, well, what, what is the real cost of driving your own vehicle? And I had an idea in my mind and then I found that works, you know, at ISU Extension that really kind of put it out there and I played with that for a little while and, you know, with, with as many variables as there are, it can really, um, you know, the cost per mile is very, can vary a lot, depending on the car that the person's driving, the price of gas and how many miles they're driving.
All right.
You know, you can, you can play with those numbers and, and you can see where 70 cents a mile would, would be overcompensating, but in some cases it would be undercompensating as well. And I think, um, I went into that, you know, when I first read it in the back and I was like, wow, 70 cents, ooh, that's a lot. But then, uh, after looking at it and considering more information, I'm, you know, I'm okay with that. Because I think, like I said, it undercompensates some, but may overcompensate others depending on a lot of variables.
Kind of sounds like a motion in a second.
Well, it wasn't, but.
Well, Lee Ann started the conversation.
I meant that. Uh, there was one person that, that had more mileage, has claimed more mileage, um, than, than others. And, uh, I mean, it's, it's not a huge amount of miles, but I was just wondering, are those all miles in the district?
I think most of them, yeah, I, I would actually, she gives an absolute breakdown of every single.
Yeah, she's got very detailed.
It's very detailed and, uh, yeah. I would say they're all in the district. They're, I'd say 99% of those are home visits.
She does bounce to a lot of places that are.
Let's say if you consider a 180-day schedule.
She goes through the summer, is year-round.
Okay, I said at, at 180 days, that'd be 35 miles a day, so if you had the summers in there, that.
She goes, she only, she typically submits once a year.
Wow.
For the whole calendar year.
Does that work best for administration to do it once a year, to do it every month or every quarter?
I think once a year is just fine, I don't see it, either way, you know what I mean? It's.
As long as you don't get surprised when someone claims 20,000 miles or something.
Right, exactly. But I'm not sure who that would be.
There's one employee on here that I was surprised the mileage was so low. Because I've seen that person at a lot of events outside of.
He just typically hasn't submitted in the past and came to me and asked what I thought about it and I told him it, it's a legitimate, legitimate claim.
Yeah.
And you could do that from your line item if you wish, so I think that's the first time he's ever done it.
I think it's worth monitoring and revisiting, um, because if, if it does, you know, go from 32 to 50 or 70, you know, I can encourage more usage or more claims as well.
Do I hear you asking administration to bring it back to us next summer?
Well, yes, I, I think, I think a lot of things should be brought to us.
Summer's a good time because we, we've ended the school year and we have to do the recaps.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's something that should definitely be reviewed every year because like I said, at some point you'll reach a tipping point where it's going to make sense to buy a vehicle and, or two and, and
Yeah.
Either assign them to the employees that are driving a lot or, or do some sort of a pool. So yeah, I think it should be, it should be something the board sees every year, I think. I don't know if that needs to be part of the policy or part of the motion.
Why don't we wait a year?
Yeah.
And see what we see. Tom?
Absolutely. Um, I've, I've just been absorbing and I agree with everything everyone's been saying. I think it's, it makes sense to, to bring it at least to the current IRS mileage reimbursement rate. So that people are not getting underfunded by this, so, yeah.
Yeah, and then that tying it to the IRS, IRS mileage rate would, you know, provide for periodic adjustments as well that we don't have to worry about.
Yep.
How often do they, Lee Ann, you might know this one, how often do they change their mileage reimbursement rates?
I do not know because we are not even IRS mileage rate at the county for 50 cents a mile.
Okay.
You go by the state, huh?
Yeah. We're the same at our state, we don't go by that, we go by the state, obviously, but still.
You guys get the 50 cents as well?
Yeah.
I can't wait for the motion after this conversation, we've been all over the board here.
Well, I will then move, um, approval of update to policy for, for, uh, 401.7 employee travel compensation to increase the current mileage reimbursement rate to that of the IRS mileage rate and waive second reading.
I'll second that.
So we're agreeing upon 70 cents tonight?
Which is the current IRS rate.
Yes, I'm just saying, so we're for clarity for anybody listening in and Joe, you can tell us anybody's listening in.
I can, can I?
Yes, you can.
They're not.
Okay, no. On their behalf, we have a motion in a second to update policy 401.7 on travel compensation, compensation to reflect current IRS mileage reimbursement to 70 cents from the current 36 cents. Any last thoughts or concerns? Are you none on in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There you go, Dr. All right, 4.0, or 5.4, our driver's education bids.
Yeah, we just wrapped up a three-year contract with Street Smarts, so we put it out, request for proposal. We have two proposals here recommending the low, the lower cost version from Toronto's Driving Academy.
What other districts are they in?
Gilbert, Ames, primarily.
Yeah, it's a Gilbert name.
Not familiar with them, but have they been around for a few years?
Um, I think he, I think they used to drive for Smart, uh, Street Smarts and then broke out on their own.
Okay.
So I think they're
Yeah.
Probably new within the last three years. The only cost to the district is when we have to, we are responsible if, uh, the one section that we offer, if a free, reduced student takes it, we're responsible for the cost. So clearly.
Is that a yearly thing or?
Yeah, every spring we offer one section, if there's a free or reduced student in there, the district's responsible. So you can see here, Toronto's fee for that would be $320, where Street Smarts would be $445.
Do we typically have it full 20 students?
Yeah. Yeah, there's typically more that'll sign up than 20. And then what the guidance office does is takes out of the, the top 20, they, they start with the oldest, the oldest student that signed up, they go down to 20 and draw out. Most of our kids go do it on their own, you know, probably with one of these two vendors. But we are required to have a section.
I'm assuming that's probably why this Toronto's Academy does this, they offer a reduction for the free and reduced students.
Yeah, I, that's the first one of these I've seen like that, so.
Guessing they've learned that that's a good way to attract
Right.
New clientele.
Well, for District 3, I guess they, pretty sharp operators.
Yeah, I don't know how many districts they're in, but.
Well, the Toronto's are a long-time Gilbert name and, uh, and probably has been in Star County for some time, good athletes.
I would move approval of the driver's education, um, contract with Toronto's Driving Academy for the 20, for the upcoming school, or since that's three-year bid, right?
Yes.
Yes, for the following three years, uh, and the amounts given in 5.4.
One second?
Motion in a second for renewing our three-year contract with the free student at $320. And any questions, any thoughts, observations? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Well, there we go, we have that detailed in. Moves us into our consent agenda.
On the minutes from the August 4th meeting, 5:5, 5.2, the resolution to continue participation in instruct, instructional support levy. Do we need, or did we, at that meeting and in that motion and in that action, specify how much of that was going to be income tax and how much was going to be property tax? I thought we did, I thought we had that discussion.
It was in the resolution to continue as we've done it.
Okay, I read through the resolution, I didn't see that. In the resolution, some.
I'd have to go back.
I'd have to go back.
It's in the packet.
Because I had to, when I spoke to the attorney about it, that's one of the questions they wanted to know, do you plan to continue with it broken out the same way that it is? And I said, yes. So.
I went back through the resolution, which was, must have been in the last board meeting packet, and I didn't see that division in there, it just says continue the same?
It might, I have to go back and look, but they did specifically ask.
I think it might say continue the same, possibly.
Okay, I was scheming a bit for the numbers, but, okay. One of the bills on page 18, maybe a third of the way down. There's a $99 bill and the, the note says P-card denied.
Page 18?
Page 18, about a third of the way down, yeah.
Vicky Mackin.
Yeah.
Oh, that was, uh, was that either, why am I not seeing it?
It's, I just haven't.
It's about a third of the way down.
Sorry.
No, really, Joe did a good job describing it.
P-card denied. So yeah, so she had, we reimbursed, it looks like we reimbursed Vicky for that because she went to use her P-card and for some reason it was denied. And they'll deny things, I think she might have ordered it online and sometimes the P-cards, we have so much protection that it may be fine it, for whatever reason.
Better safe than sorry.
So vendors will be denied depending on how you order it, yeah, I've had that happen a couple of times too.
Mm-hmm.
But, or you order from Target.com and it denies it because you go to Target and buy it at the store.
It wouldn't deny it, correct, yeah.
I don't know why. It's coded, I guess, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Something will set it off.
Playground looks great.
Yeah, those kids are excited.
Should be.
About a week and a half ago, I was driving from a meeting, drove by there, we'd just opened it up, it was on the day or two before and there were a number of kids out there, so I just pulled in and went out there and walked around and
Sure.
Boy, they were excited.
Really?
Yeah. Million watt smiles going on out there.
Well, I'm glad that we got asked to do it and I feel extra proud of the fact that we were in the fiscal position to do it. I mean, that reflects a lot of years of doing the right thing, being able to say yes to a very good request.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, my memory is correct, didn't the central elementary administration and staff have a role in raising the funds to do that as well? Or was it PTA?
PTA helped out.
Yeah.
And then the Wetherspoons Foundation, we've used some of their donations towards it over the past three years, probably two.
That was a welcome offset, but it's a lift we could have made without a problem.
Yeah, well, thank you, PTA.
Yeah, I was sure to mention one of those groups in the Art Nevada Magazine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So remind me what happened to some of that equipment that was there?
Yeah.
Got repurposed places or got sold, or got returned back to the company?
Yeah, it got recycled.
Recycled, the, the company that we had installed that bought that?
Um, I wouldn't say buy it, um, I can have David in the specifics, but
I think we discussed this at the time.
We had a number of people reach out to us
Uh-huh.
Wanting the equipment. The liability follows the original owner.
Really?
Yes.
You euthanized the equipment?
So that was a, a no from
Interesting, okay.
People who were wanting to bid on it and so forth.
Not that'd be the case.
I may have had someone personally in my household asking about that and I'm like, I don't remember the discussion at this point, but.
Don't tell me, don't tell me.
We had a number of people reach out, liability follows the original owner, so we can handle it.
Excellent, now I have something to go tell them.
Never watched them again. You have to watch the meeting video, just say, watch, and then
That's an interesting caveat, isn't it?
I did not, I would have never
Wonder why that is.
I don't know, I don't know either.
It's weird.
I mean, we took, look what we took here from this stadium, when we did the stadium and then took it over here. And I guess, so the conversation, the only time other than that, that would be when we were going to put it somewhere else in our own use.
Yeah.
Boy, that'll help. That has been a weeping sore every year with all that mulch.
Yeah.
And I remember Kathy Jakey saying between the pea gravel and the mulch getting tracked in now. And the green space looks great too.
Green space looks better than it ever has.
I gotta tell you.
It's not all grass, but there is vegetation on it.
At least for the time being.
Well, it'll last long.
I mean, it's a solid upgrade what historically it has been because the water wants to flow through that area.
Yep.
And as you can tell by the grate, all you have to do is stand up there on the fence looking southwest and it goes down. Anybody else see anything in the bills or personnel or the hires? I don't think we get anything. It's kind of quite a packet for tonight. Leanne, got anything?
Well, just the general question with the addition to the packet, are we down par? I mean
No, that one I think was anticipated. I think I think the high school is okay. I can't remember. High school, middle school, they might still need one somewhere. Elementary needs one, maybe two, I believe.
That's better than it was.
Yeah, no, that has gotten better.
We're still getting a lot of applicants when we do have an opening for the pairs?
Pairs, uh, it's slowed down. Yeah. So it'll remain up for probably quite some time.
It's fine. We, one of the things I always look at when I first get a board packet, paper copy. I look at the personnel. And you always see, you know, the hires and the resignations and pairs are just there. Both sides in the equation. Nothing unusual. Nice having that paper there again, isn't it?
Takes my best, still getting, getting all the heat you got last meeting or what?
Well, geez, you got, you got elementary kids buying cobalt for that thing. Me, I'm just a tree.
I'm a probability.
Thank you, Leanne, I second it.
We have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Leanne. Board member comments? I have understood that the city is looking to do another rate increase on their water here later this fall. And I would go so far as to make this a voted action item to the board's agenda here coming up before that happens. I would like to think that we are in standing in a way that we can ask to be held harmless because all we do is pass a rate increase given to us to consume the water that we consume.
We have a city school meeting next week or two weeks?
Two weeks.
Two weeks. I will put that on
We are not Burke, but we are not small. And we have a sharing agreement on much. Not that we couldn't absorb it, but I think on a principal basis, as we are asked to provide in resources and facilities, this would be one where it's just like, because we've done a considerable jump in our water budget in the last two years, and I'd like to think that we could possibly just take a breath. So I would ask that that be put as a discussion and also I'm glad that you brought that up because that'd be the ideal forum to do it because I'd like to see us, if everybody is in, you know, that's a request, I don't have the power to compel. But does everybody see the merit of doing that in a board meeting? Got two head nods.
I nodded my head.
I'm sorry, I was looking at Joe and then I missed you, and then I went back to Tom and so
Yeah.
Alright.
Sure.
That's my comment. Anybody else got anything?
I had one that I forgot, so I'm going to write it down this morning.
I have to do a board salute for Leanne making a motion to
Actually, that was it. Can we have Amisee come back? I don't know that she'll be maybe in the October meetings?
I think she is.
I was just thinking a board salute.
Yeah.
Absolutely, good.
Tonight won't be, tonight wasn't baby-related. Yeah, and we'll do what we typically do with our plaque and whatnot, yeah.
That was not my friend, by the way.
That was good, that was good, yeah. She's earned it. Have we got, okay, since you brought up Amisee, has anybody else made any inquiries on our homeschool program in the, since last meeting? Tom, Joe? No, no? We only have one meeting in September on the fifteenth. So once we have a month off, probably see each other at some school activities coming up. School starting Thursday?
Monday.
Close enough. We're gonna have kids
Further you get away from it.
Well, that's the whole thing. Thanks for not changing the school colors. Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?